Hello, everybody. Adversaries, enemies, friends, enemies. It is Tuesday, November 28th, and this is the meeting of the Hadley Housing Authority at Golden Court in Hadley, Massachusetts. The agenda as stands. First, any topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting? Any topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of a meeting that's not on the agenda? Sue.
Yeah, I want to talk, maybe I'm mistaken, but when I looked at the Belcher Town Truck maybe a month ago, I noticed that it had Connecticut license plates.
It does not have Connecticut license plates. It has Massachusetts government.
But it says Connecticut. All right, well, look again.
Obviously, it's government.
Maybe it was, but I just wondered, you know, what was happening there.
I get confused by long words all the time.
Government.
And the other topics, now, you can always bring things up later if the board doesn't oppose. The approval of minutes. Reese, would you like to ask or make that motion, please, for the 37 minutes?
Okay. Well, let's find out if everybody's read them and has any. I move we approve the minutes from Tuesday, September 26th, as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sue has a second. Sue seconded it.
All right, I'll second.
Any other discussion on approval of the minutes of Tuesday, September 26th? You can always read it later and bring back issues if you have them. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Approved?
I move that we approve the minutes of Thursday, October 5th, 2023.
I have a second.
Thank you, Richie has seconded it. Discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstentions? All right, done with that.
Nope.
Nope, sorry, we have another one?
Say they're approved.
Approved.
Okay. I move that we approve the minutes from Tuesday, October 24th, 2023.
Do I have a second?
I'll second again.
Richie? Okay, Richie, this is second. Discussion on approval of the minutes of Tuesday, October 24th. Hearing any? All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstentions? Passed, and I say the minutes of October 24th. Thank you, everybody. Executive Director's Report. First is the financial, the warranty books.
Okay, I've got them all in order, I'll help you.
And I'm going to bring up an issue here. Pamela, help me with this. Either Pamela, please. These warrant reports are titled "Transactions Between," and then there's a single date. And this, the first one I'm looking at here, is "For Accounts Payable Transactions Between 9/7/2023 and 9/7/2023."
Would you like me to explain? No?
My suggestion was going to be, for clarity's sake, that since the transactions happen over a period of time, not just on one day, this is the day the checks are being written, I understand that, but the transactions for which we are making those payments actually happen over a period of time, usually within the previous month, but I see not always. Would it be more clear and more correct to say for transactions between, and have the previous month listed here, if you'd rather just say the date that you're writing the check? I've never seen this before, I realize.
So this is how the report comes from the software. Typically, what we do in the other two housing authorities is it shows transactions from September 1st to September 30, 31st?
Yeah.
It'll show the entire month, and we always approve that month. But in Hadley, we break it up because your folks are physically signing, we have two folks that are signing and reviewing the invoices prior. So that's why they're broken up, and it's on those days that the checks are, the checks are being cut. So that's why we have, so on, as you pointed out, on September 7th, staff accountant did that, those ones, and then, I'm not sure what, in October, October 5th, they did that, that one, and there were no other?
No, 9/21, 9/7, 9/21, and October 5th. October 26th.
And the other thing is to, I can just direct her to do them once a month, because this is a lot of days to be, typically, we only do once a month in smaller housing authorities.
I don't, can I, can I add something to that?
Sure.
Can I clarify? We have been through this very same question before, I think Harry brought it up before, and we all then had to get educated about it. It's because the board voted, quorum vote, to do it this way. And so this date, as Pamela said, points to when Rich and I sat there and wrote checks. The report is pulled that day. And so it's, even though these are the invoices, transactions are when these bills were paid, and they were paid on that day. So all these bills were paid on 9/7, 10, you know, 26, et cetera. But that, but this is a choice the board made.
Thank you, not my board, but thank you. I'm going to repeat, though, in my opinion, it is misleading and obfuscates the actual activity of the housing authority. By making it look like these transactions, when you really mean these payments are being made on one day. All these transactions of the warrant happen at various dates, at various times during the month, so.
Would you like me to give a minute?
If that's clear to all of you, and your bookkeeping, and the auditor, and all that stuff, then no big deal. But for me, I thought it was, you know, much less clear than it had to be. Harry's got a point here. Hang on a second. Yes, Harry?
Well, the point on this particular one, I've got questions on a number of these that I've highlighted, but this one that we're talking about first on 9/7, we have an invoice that goes back to March 31st to Gary De Pace, Laser Chucks. So at the top, instead of 9/7 to 9/7, you'd have to make that 3/31 to 9/7, because you've got a 3/31 invoice here.
They're saying this, this just represents the day of the payments, not?
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
But I'm also wondering why we're getting an invoice in, now it's November or September, going back to March.
So your question is why the payments were several months after the invoice date?
Certainly, yes.
I can respond to that.
Do you know the answer about papers?
Yes, because I've already gone, Rich and I've gone through these invoices.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Yes, good.
So again, this report is about the payment transactions.
Right.
It's not about all the dates of all the invoices. These invoices, no matter their date, were paid on this date for accounts payable transactions. The transactions are the payment of these invoices on these dates, that's why, and the board had this explained to them.
Yeah, Reese, I don't want to waste too much time here.
Okay, so the other question is, is why do we have 3/31?
Right.
We cannot pay an invoice until we receive it. That particular invoice, we did not receive. So now we've received it, now we pay it.
Okay.
Okay.
So the invoice was?
And that was to Gary De Pace back in March, and you just?
He just didn't give us the invoice until, on his system, he had it, but it didn't get mailed to us, is my understanding, when I asked about it.
Okay. Okay, Harry? I don't know why he's counting out his invoices four months later or six months later. Not our problem.
Well, it is somewhat concerning, because he is our fee accountant, and the timeliness of that bill, and then his treasurer's reports and all of his other stuff that's out here. So I still remain leery about that. Do you have a question on an invoice here on this, if we're talking about them in order, 9/7? August 18th, what is this summons and order notice, $45.04 Office of the Sheriff, what is that?
It's for the sheriff to serve a notice through the, from the court. We're required by law for the sheriff to do so.
And we pay that?
And then it, it goes onto the tenant's account, but if we?
Oh, so this was a tenant that we?
Absolutely.
Had to serve, and the sheriff had to do it?
The sheriff has to do it.
We pay it, but then we get?
We could get reimbursed from the tenant, yep.
That's the $45.04?
Yeah, it's not the amount that concerns me, it's the process, I guess.
Okay.
So this is a tenant that we took, or you took to court, but had a sheriff?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
It never happened.
Any of the September 7th, or any other of the warrants? Did we just approve all the warrants?
No.
The minutes?
No, we haven't.
Right. Okay. If we're all satisfied, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the warrants of 9/7 and 9/7.
I move that we approve the warrant report for 9/7 in the amount of $3,881.76.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Sue. Any other discussion?
Before you call the vote?
Yes, sir.
Since Risa is the treasurer, and she reviews these invoices, I think somebody else, just with checks and balances and financial control, someone else ought to be making the motion to accept the warrant and pay the bills. Because she's reviewing them, she's reviewing them, someone else should be, and Richie reviews them as well, so it either Sue or me or you, somebody else should be making the motion.
Make the motion to?
So there's some, there's some coverage.
Not an argument here over that. Anybody, Sue, would you like to make the motion to approve the treasurer?
No.
Harry?
I vote no on all these anyway, so no, I'm not making any motion.
All right.
There isn't any reason to exclude people on the Finance Subcommittee to make the motion.
All right.
There is no rule that would exclude either Rich or myself from making the motion.
Okay, well, we can look into that if we want to. I'll make the motion to approve the transactions between 9/7 and 9/7. Do I have a second?
I seconded it.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I vote no.
You vote no. Any abstentions? Sorry, we both say aye.
I said aye, yes.
You said aye. Harry said no, and no abstentions, so the motion passes. We'll move on to the transactions between 10/5 and 10/5.
You just did, okay. I believe we're at 9/21, next page? It's, it's two pages?
Stable together?
Yeah.
9/21 is, is it two pages, then?
Yeah.
Well, we're missing 9/21 on here. Okay, so we can just look.
I'll have to abstain, if everybody else has it and hasn't looked at it.
No, here it is. Here it go, we can share it.
Thank you.
Do you have any?
Yeah.
I do, too. Yep. We're just missing a page. There it go, that's 9/21.
All right, has everybody had a chance to look at the accounts paid on 9/21?
I have.
Okay.
Did you have?
What?
You looked at the warrant for 9/21?
That's the one that totals at 23,896.36.
Mm-hmm, the bill.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the warrant report for 9/21/23 in the amount of $23,896.38.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
No.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain? Okay, motion passes. Then I'm going to go October 5th, transactions on October 5th. The summary of this?
Total is, yeah. Yeah, I can't go.
Each total 70,891 change. Again, this is the October 5th warrant.
I move we approve the warrant for 10/5/2023 in the amount of, thank you, David.
Seventeen.
All in favor?
Well, before you go to that discussion, you have the motion, and a second, and a discussion. Race Street Eviction Services, do we get reimbursed for that as well?
It goes onto the ledger that, when we go after the tenant, and then that's how we would get it.
So the tenant that was, is involved, we have to pay the eviction service, and then the tenant's going to go versus us?
Well, it, right, we attempt to get it. We go through collections, we go through the Department of Revenue.
So my question is, if they're being evicted and they leave the premises, how are you going to collect this money?
We go through a credit bureau, and we go through the Department of Revenue. So we get, we hand over the information to the Department of Revenue through their Inceptor program, because we're a government agency, and they take all their tax returns, their Massachusetts tax returns, and they will take any lottery winnings. And then in this instance, too, the tenant bought a house, we're going to go after them in small claims court, and put a lien on the house.
They bought a house?
They bought a house, instead of paying the rent, they bought a house.
Okay.
We probably?
That's possible, no, it's probably right. I don't like the special rhetoric. They don't pay the rent.
Good for her.
They buy a house. We evict them, we get charged for the eviction, and now you have to go after the house?
Well, we're going to go after the tenant for the, for the payments. We're going to use all means necessary to go after the tenant.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that, what were you telling him?
She was asking that?
Well, I should hear if there's other discussion going on. We were in the middle of something here. Well, you said something, what did I miss?
I believe he's going to tell us.
She asked that they're be quiet in the room when the commissioners are talking. Thank you.
Until public, until?
So it had nothing to do with my conversation?
Until they're acknowledged by, by the chair.
But I was having a dialogue, so it's not that, I'm sorry. No, that's fine, I just don't want to miss anything, if you're getting some information in here. Okay. All right, so what's our success rate in getting this money? We've had these in the past, I'm sure, huh?
No, this one's pretty unique. This is a unique one, and we just started using the Inceptor program. There's, there's only three housing authorities that are using it, but we, I anticipate getting something in January or February, when the tax returns. It is only Massachusetts tax return, so it's probably going to be a little bit smaller, but it will be something.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions about the warrant of October 5th, 2023? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Oh, we already did that.
We did that, and we seconded it, and we abstained.
Now it was done.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Against?
No.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, motion passes. Do I have another one? October 26th, is it?
October 26th, and then?
So that's what I mean.
And then that's the amount right there.
All right, we're now looking at the accounts payable record of October 26th, 2023. The total is $161,279.11.
I move that we accept the warrant report for 10/26, 2023, in the amount of $161,000, or, I mean, 161, say it for me, Wayne.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, have a question?
Yes.
On 9/27/23, Building 5, boiler went dry, reset. Would you explain that, please, for $566?
Can we wait to do this point of order? So we got a motion, is there a second? We, well, then it comes out.
Do I have a second for discussion?
I don't think we're discussing.
All right, we have a second for discussion, that's Sue. All right, Sue, a discussion?
Second.
What was that?
Rich, are you supplying the second?
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Now a discussion.
9/27/23, Building 5, boiler went dry, and to reset the boiler, would there be an explanation for that, please?
So it's my understanding what happened is, so we're on automatic oil delivery through a local company, and it was, that boiler went dry before its delivery came.
But it happened to more than one building during that time, they delivered to more than one building on that day. And that's the third time in like, almost six or seven months that we have lost our hot water, and due to the boiler going so low. And I understand, through the grapevine, which I can't substantiate it, that we're no longer on watchdog service, that we're, the maintenance men are now checking the gauges and notifying when we need oil. And I think that's, if that's so, I think that's why we are having some hot water problem, because we're not on this continual watchdog service.
So I don't know where you're getting the term watchdog service?
Watch, we live, they come like every four weeks or five weeks.
So what you just said is absolutely incorrect. We are on an automatic delivery, and the, for us to keep an eye on what, between the weather and when the delivery comes, maintenance is now doing a check. So maintenance is backing up that automatic delivery to help avoid something like this.
And why is it three times we've lost our hot water?
I have no knowledge of three times.
Knowing that, hearing from the oil people that we practically had zero oil in our, in our tanks.
That's misinformation. You have misinformation. I'm, you just do, I'm, you just do.
Well, it's something brand new. I've lived here a long time, and this has just been happening more and more, and it's a lot in one period of time.
It's untrue what you're saying. We are on continuous deliveries.
Well, maybe we could contact the oil people and?
We have it under control.
We do. Well, if you're a tenant and have no hot water all day, multiple times, it's not under control.
I don't have any knowledge of multiple times. I would like to point something out on this, though. Harry had asked some questions in the past about our capital funding, and how we use those dollars, and where that, the dollars come from when we have them. So we just have the window project, and on this warrant report, you'll see on page one, there is a payment to Bradley Architects of $1,000. That was on 8/28. And then on page two, to diversify construction, there were two payments that show coming in, and I can explain the difference of the invoice date, too, totaling $155,401. So what happens is, is they, they issue these invoices, and they go through a CAPHUB system, and they have to be approved all along. They have to be approved by the architect, they have to be approved by the construction advisor, they have to be approved by the housing authority, and they have to be approved by ultimately, EOHLC. Once they're approved, then the money that we have set aside in capital funding, which the state holds on to, is released through our vendor web and direct deposited into our checking account, and then we have to turn around and issue the check. So we didn't, once everything is approved, the money is filtered in to make these payments, and then we, we pay out, but only once we've been reimbursed from the state first.
I will have some more questions along those lines on the Treasurers Report that was prepared by Gary De Pace.
Okay.
Because I see these large numbers here. But they're not reflected on the Treasurers Report. I'll get to that.
I have a question. What's the PHA software quarterly invoice? We pay a couple grand a year for the Public Housing Authority?
Yep.
Software that's just to access the databases, or?
That's, that's our, that's our main software that we use. It's for, it contains all of our tenant information, it contains work orders, our accounts payable, our, we could potentially do KMO, but we don't use it for KMO. But it's a cloud-based system, and Hadley's been using it for decades.
Okay. And the state charges us a couple grand a year to use it?
It's not through the state, it's a private, it's a private company.
Private?
Yeah, but they do work with the housing authorities, they, they've made changes to reports when we ask for them, they do upgrades on it, they work with the state with, you know, now, when we do our PMR audits or our AUP audits, there's a nice little button you push, and it gives you the information that the auditor would need.
Okay.
They're very receptive.
And the $1,348.91 for the law offices at the Lane Emil Donald P.C.?
Yep.
Is that for some tenant, yeah?
And we pay the $165 an hour?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It was one of the invoices I saw, we had three different rates. Thank you, buddy.
Don't forget that.
I can't.
All right, are we ready for a motion to approve?
We've already?
It's a big one. Can we do that in a second, since we've been in discussion?
Yeah, now we're ready to vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
No.
No, three in favor, two against. Any abstentions? Three in favor, two against. This is the transactions dated October 26th, 2023. That's it for the warrants. Right? All right. The Treasurers Report dated September 30th, 2023. We also have one dated October 31st, 2023. We'll look at September 30th, 2023 first. I'll ask for a motion to approve this Treasurers Report of September 30th. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the Treasurers Report of September 30th, 2023.
Do I have a second, please?
I'll do the second.
Second, Richie? Any discussion?
Yes, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, thank you very much. I see in August, we had a balance in the checking account of $10,500 or so. Goes up to $83,000 at the end of September. And I'm having, again as usual, some challenge getting these numbers to agree based on the warrants that are being paid, and more importantly, we'll have the discussion on the October one as well, because we're paying more than what I see being decreased in the checking account, if we're paying these all by the checking. So first of all, we came in with $73,000. Where did that come from? And how's it accounted for in here on these reports? I don't see it. So if I missed it, I need to see it.
Where's the 73 here inside?
From $10,000 to $83,000. $73,000. I like that, though, because it's going the right way. We're getting money, but I don't have a record of where it's coming from. I can't see where it's coming from.
So the, the, the number that you get is the balance in the checking account at the end of the month. So it's just a snapshot in time, but back in August, we had not been, we had not received a substantial portion of our subsidy from the executive office. So Gary De Pace and I wrote to, it's, his IO, I can't say his last name, he's the head of finance at, at DHCD, and said, can you please give us our subsidy? We're down to $10,000, we need to pay bills. So we got a chunk of the subsidy coming down. And that should be reflected in the?
That doesn't happen too often, right, Pamela?
No, it does.
You have to call that?
Yeah, that we have to call, yeah, because it, there's really, there's one or two people in that department that are handling all the housing authorities. So it's, you know, people get behind, and you just have to remind them, we'd like to get paid.
And it's?
And it's like 260-something housing authorities that they're responsible.
248, yeah.
248. It's a lot. So on that, on page two, it talks about the operating subsidy, but you're talking about when do you see it? You want me to know when exactly do you see it pop into the checking account? Is that what you're...
I'm not that concerned with the September one as I am with the October. So, because October, we're paying much, much more than a $4,000 reduction from September to October with the $79,000, but we're taking them individually. The September one, the $83,000, that's fine, it's going up, we're getting money and we're paying bills. But I don't see where all these bills that we're paying are being reflected in the treasures report as prepared by Gary DePace. And again, I have an issue with the numbers and the finances and the accounting and Gary's reporting here and so, no, that's just my thing.
Right, so again, it is a snapshot in time with that and then where you see that is on our mod report. Here it comes in and is...
Are we on page three? Oh, no, I saw the...
Well, I'm on page three and I see the mod cost, but I don't see that anywhere.
Right.
So...
I'll have to find out when it came through on vendor web because she paid it in October, but it could have hit that same day and then we paid it.
Because Gary puts these together.
Gary does, yeah, those are from here.
I can't tag his numbers together on what's going on. So that's...
Right. I can find that out and I can have the answer for you for December.
These were all prepared as of 9/30, so we would have had...
I see $27,000 on the mod grant. And I see...
They're paper clipped together, so...
Can I, may I continue?
Sure.
Okay. I see on your mod page three there, we have some money coming in and some money coming out, $27,000 coming in, $20,000 going out. That's nowhere near $73,000 on the ending balance. So I don't know where Gary puts his numbers together, how he gets his numbers. That's what I both don't.
Have we had a vote on this one yet, Chris?
Yeah, so on the third page, you can see the credit on 176,958.60.
That's for October 30th, Gary.
That's the October date. It's on this, this treasure, the October treasure report.
Okay. I was trying to keep them separate, but if you want to go to October, I'll go to October.
Yeah, that's where it's showing that.
Because October, we have $161,000 paid for the window project. We have another $23,000 paid, another bill. And the checking account only shows going down from $83,000 to $79. It's not making any sense.
Because that is the balance at the end of the month. So you could have had $300,000 in there, but we spent it.
Right, so let's go to the body. Where is he reflecting?
So in September, there's $20,557, uh, $20,557.60 under mod control costs, that's, that came in. And then in October, $176,958.60 came in. And then there's an accounting of it under the work plan for that, for those numbers. The work plan number is across the top, the 117082 and then 117084.
He must have these reversed then because credit means we're getting money in, debit means money is going out. So he's, I think he's got these confused.
Well, he's showing the money coming in.
I see the two numbers, but I think they're in the wrong columns.
And then they go out down here.
Yeah, but I, okay.
They go up down.
I, okay.
We good to move on or...
Sure.
Are we voting on the September 30 treasures report?
Yeah, we, that's the only one we've got up for vote. We've already done our motion and second, so now if there's discussions...
Questions overall in favor of approving the treasures report for September 30, May 23? Say aye.
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 On voting, no?
No.
No.
No, three in favor, two against. Abstentions, no abstentions. Okay, moving on to the October 31, 2023 treasures report.
I move that we approve the treasures report for October 31, 2023.
On the second?
No second.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Against?
I don't know.
No.
No. Three in favor, two against, motion passes. That's it for the treasures report. Financials for the end of the fiscal year. Who's gone through that? I have not. Do we need approval on this, Pamela, or any...
We absolutely need approval. We have to submit these to DHCD and we need signatures as well. So this is, the quarterly report is also the fiscal year end.
Okay, is this the audited financials for the year end?
It's not audited yet, it will be audited by the independent auditor, but it's from, it's from our fee accountant and then it will be audited after the fact.
Does the fee accountant ever come in to answer questions or talk about?
He does, yeah.
He's, he's come in several times since you've been on the board.
No, he was here once that I remember.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah.
Since Gary's put this together and it does get audited by an independent, is that that Lisa Fallon?
Actually, this coming year is going to be a different auditor because we're required by regulation to change the auditor every five years. So it'll be a different auditor. I don't know who it is yet, I have to get the list from EOHLC.
Right, so the last five years, Lisa Fallon has done it?
Uh, yes.
And she's the one that does generally the agreed-upon procedures, the AUP audit?
That's correct.
And when I spoke to her, she told me that that's what she did, agreed-upon procedures, nothing financial, but since that, we've had meetings. Gary said, yes, she looks at financials. And she's also affiliated with his firm, the two of them in Munson, I believe. Same address, same...
They are not affiliated, she rents from him.
She rents from him.
And they went through, they went through the State Ethics Commission and they went through the executive office and the Secretary of State to disclose all that information.
Lisa, and when do we go out, I'm not finished, thank you. And when do we go out for the next independent audit? Is there an RFP, is there a process?
No, we have to, we have to use the folks that DHCD has already vetted. So they have a list, we'll get a list of the folks that they've vetted. Very much like the regional...
And then who makes the decision who will, who will get the job to audit Gary DePace's audit?
The board. The board will make that.
His board?
His board, yep.
No, I'm done, thank you.
I understand that the Warren Housing Report has not renewed Gary DePace's contract. Is it public record why they did not renew his contract as their accountant?
Where is this?
You'd have to talk to Warren.
Where is it?
Warren has not renewed Gary DePace's contract. And I wanted to know if it was public record why they did not renew his contract as their accountant.
So I don't have that information, but you could ask Warren. I don't run the Warren Housing Authority.
I know, but I'm just asking you, is it public knowledge? Another kind of person without...
It is now because you've, you've made that, you've said it in a public meeting. So it is now. I know there's a lot of tenants associations and folks that are really in an uproar that are trying to get rid of the fee accountants, the regional attorneys, the executive directors that have been around for a number of years because they think they can change the regulations by doing so. So, but I don't know what's going on in Warren. You'll have to, you'll have to reach out to that, I would reach out to the board chair.
I still have mine.
Yes, Reese.
So two things now. Pamela, an AUP does include financial auditing, all right? That was my understanding, even though it's been brought up time and time again. It include, AUP includes financial auditing. And that's what Lisa Fallon did and will, because of regulations, every five years we have to get a new auditor and we will. The other thing is, just brought up because of what Sue said and what Pamela said is, we as board commissioners, according to the ethics laws, we do not have the authority to go call Warren or somebody at, at the Warren Housing Authority and ask them anything without a board quorum vote. So I just want to bring that up if...
Reese, I'm going to interrupt you, I'm very sorry. I believe you know more than the rest of us put together about the rules and regs, but I have to challenge you that before you tell another American citizen who they can and cannot talk to.
I'm not. I'm saying we need a board quorum. I'm not done, you, you have challenged me.
Go ahead.
A board quorum vote would solve the problem. So that if any individual board member wants to take it upon themselves, they need to get, we can only act as a quorum, we can only act as a quorum. If any one of these board members here, sitting here, decides to contact someone or say something or get information, it needs to be by a board quorum vote to protect them and to protect the board. We can't say, yes, you go call this person or that person. Let's have a board quorum vote.
So I have a question, Commissioner. Now that this has been, for a while, and I'm hearing this, I'm concerned, I'm curious why his contract is not being renewed, what the circumstances are. So if you're saying we need a board vote here so that we can designate somebody to call and find out? Because I'd be curious, he's our fee accountant. I'd like to know what went on.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so I will make a motion.
Excuse me, we're on the discussion of the financials of the Hadley Housing Authority. When we get into the board, board discussion, please feel free to bring up this discussion about Warren again. But right now, I hope you all, guys agree with me that we are trying to approve or table or disapprove of the financial statements as they're approved, as they're presented to us today. Okay? So do we have a motion to approve or the financial statements? The financials for the end of the fiscal year? So looking for a motion to vote to approve the financials, the year-end financial statements of the Hadley Housing Authority. Do I have a motion?
I move, oh, you want to?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the financials for the end of the fiscal year.
I have a second.
No second.
Richie, seconds. Okay, now discussion on this. I have a comment myself, but I would turn to you guys. Any questions? Do you feel like you understand it properly? My personal comment is, I wish the preparer could be with us even just for a few minutes in case we have any questions about the line items or trends. I try to be a bigger picture guy and ask, does he have, he or she have concerns about any direction we're heading with any of the expenses or revenues we have? Does he or she have concerns about the future of the financial strength of the Hadley Housing Authority? Those kind of general questions about the overview of what's going on with housing authorities and what's going on in Hadley and Amherst and Belchertown. So I myself, I'm going to abstain from the vote and request that the preparer comes in and meets, or if you guys allow me to speak to the preparer on the phone.
I actually helped prepare this as well. I'm your CFO and so I work with the fee accountant, so I can answer that. And this has to be sent to DHCD by the end of the month or it's an audit finding. And we got an audit finding last year because the previous board refused to...
Okay, so I'm going to go back to my question with, if you guys don't mind. If you don't have any individual questions on specific issues or line items. Reese, looks like you're ready with something, are you just looking it over?
No, I've already read it.
Okay.
I'm waiting to vote to approve it.
Okay. All right, anybody else have specific questions or concerns about the financials year-end financial statements? If not, Pamela, that's my question. Do you have any concerns about trends in revenue and expenses and anything? Do you think everything is hunky-dory or...
No, it's not hunky-dory. No, it's...
Would you mind talking to the board and what your concerns are?
Sure, my concerns are, and you'll see it when we get to the new budget for the coming year, is that our budget reserves is down 45%. We've spent a lot of money this past year on vacancies, getting vacancies ready and also legal costs too. And there is, because of the vacancy initiative and in working with Gary, there are some budget exemptions that we put in the new budget that we can help cover that. Plus I have, also because of the vacancy initiative, I have some really good news about more money for the vacancies coming through DHCD. That's going to help preserve our reserves. So we are, we're making good strides towards getting people to actually pay their rent. It's always been a problem in Hadley, but it's getting better. So there, but that is a concern right now, our budget reserves went down.
And what's the red line again for where?
35.
35%? We're at 43%?
45.
45%.
So about the quarterly, this quarterly, the year-end budget, it's...
Sorry.
You don't have any concerns about what's in this? It's the operating budget going forward that you want to give us some more information about?
Well, it's just that we didn't have enough, we did not have enough to cover us for all of our, for all of our vacancies, is that what we've been having?
Correct.
What?
Sue's the question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sue, you just throw something at me.
I'm, because of the fact that we still have a lot of apartments available that are unoccupied, I think bringing up the fact that, that a lot of money has been used to, to over, you know, overhaul the apartments. If these apartments are totally overhauled, ready to go, you know, I'm wondering as a board member and as a tenant, why people are not in them yet. And I don't think that personally that we can, we can look at the CHAMP's application as the total reason why. I think that a lot of housing authorities hide behind the CHAMP. Yes, it's a real problem, but I do believe that, that a lot of executive directors hide behind the CHAMP application only because I really feel, especially after all those articles that are in the newspaper about the lack of apartments available for low-income people, if they're still sitting there, I feel that it's really a crime that this is happening. And I also feel, this is my personal opinion, when you say that our reserve is down to 46%.
45.
45%. I think when, I personally feel as a board member, when you say that, it's because you're saying, in other words, don't ask for anything because we're already down so low.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
And I think it makes people, when it comes time for voting, like when we voted for audits or when we voted for attorneys, everyone said, oh, well, where's our reserves? Oh, we don't have enough money to do this. I think by you always talking about what's in our reserve, it sort of will make certain board members stop and not vote how they really want to vote because they're afraid they're going to tap into those low reserves.
Well, I, I don't, I didn't come here to be psychoanalyzed, but...
No, but I'm just...
No, hold on, I'm telling you, I spent too much money. That's why our reserves is at 45%. I spent money on vacancies and we spent money on legal fees. That's where, that's exactly where the money went. And now we have a change in it. And as far as the CHAMP initiative, if you read the articles that went throughout the state, they most certainly did put it into CHAMP's hands. And then the other thing that DHC recognized is that we don't have enough money to put into these vacancies. So they're giving us more money. So I have very good news coming up under the capital portion of that. But it most certainly is CHAMP and our units are not vacant-ready. The Hadley Housing Authority had 12 units that went vacant in the last year and we filled 12 units. But it's just we keep getting more and more vacancies.
And because of the fact that we're using our own maintenance man often to do 99% of the work to renovate these apartments, in other years, there was often people here that, you know, that Dion would do the floors and painters would come paint. It wasn't your own maintenance team. But when you don't see, well, we only have one day a week here as maintenance, which is Thursday only, and we don't see the maintenance here on Thursdays anymore. Hadley Housing Authority is paying Amherst Housing Authority for this maintenance that hardly is ever here on the one day that they...
So your Hadley Housing Authority is charged for when the maintenance men show up? So your Hadley Housing Authority is charged for when the maintenance men show up? And you have, as a resident, you are fully aware that on Thursday, it's tenant-generated work orders. That's what Thursday means.
But we don't see them anymore.
If you don't have a work order, you wouldn't see them. Other than that, they have been. They just finished unit 23. And then I, well, I have the outline of what's happening with the vacancy initiative under the capital. So that's where that is.
Okay. Well, myself, I'd still like to hear from the preparer if there was anything that he or she was concerned with. I don't want to hold up the process though. Any others? So again, you have no big concerns? Everything is, you're saying you've spent too much in the past and you shouldn't have to moving forward next year?
Correct. We have, because I applied for one.
All right. And we have some new money coming in, which will be used for renovating apartments? Is that what I heard?
Yeah. And CHAMP screening.
And CHAMP screening. And is it true that applicants are going to be prioritized if they're from this region, this area in particular?
They're, they're still going to be prioritized by the regulations. DHCD made some changes where they took, AIG has been going through the priorities that are in the system. They took them all out and put them over into AIG's hands. So basically what happened is somebody can go in and they can apply for housing and they can say, "I'm homeless because of a house fire." That would give them number one. Or, excuse me, "I'm homeless because of a flood." That's a number-one priority. But then what DHCD made the decision to do is that they drop them to a seven, so they stay on the main part of the list, but then their information is given to AIG, and AIG begins to vet them for the priority only. But that is taking time. They're vet, yeah, it's very confusing. But what was the good thing for Hadley and all the other housing authorities is that we instantly went in after that September 27 meeting and pulled lists, and we, our locals filtered right out.
That's good.
So we do have, we have a number of people ready to go, and we just need to now get the apartments ready.
Good. So is there any, what would you say is your biggest headache regarding the finances moving forward?
Right now is getting the approval for the final stamp from the state to get the money and for them to actually give us the money. And they're, they're trying to figure it out. They're trying, they're, the money is going to be filtered through vacant unit turnover money, which is a pool of money through the capital, or it's, yeah, some of it is coming through our budget exemption for the coming year. But they're trying to figure out procurement laws and how we're going to all maintain those procurement laws and RCAT and different things and still be able to get these units back online quickly.
Okay. So I don't think the number of vacant units has changed. We'll talk about that later, but since I've been on the board, and yet we're working on it.
Right, because you get somebody that leases up and then we get somebody that leaves.
Oh, so this is about.
You get somebody, yeah, it's, somebody passes away, we have a vacancy, we lease up. So it's a wash.
So it's not about the units, the family units that are still being worked on or anything?
We do, we do have a, one of the new, we have a new family unit, and that was, those folks needed to be moved for a medical emergency. So they were moved.
A few months ago, I was down there and looking in the windows, there was construction going on.
That was, they were testing it for asbestos and lead, which we need the lead because it did fall in the time. But that is a, that is a capital project already, one of those, one of the units on Burke Way. The other one will be as well.
Okay. So there's still a one unit on Burke's Way, family unit, that is not ready for families to move in?
There's two. There's a new one now because we moved the folks because of a medical emergency.
And how long has the one that was empty before been empty?
That one has been empty. It's been shooting every quarter.
More than a couple of months, right?
Oh, yes, definitely. Because it's a capital project. So it has, so it has to run through an architect and, it has. It's supposed to be going out to bid, it was supposed to be going out to bid November 15th, but the architect is a little bit behind. So it should be going out any time. And then I guess why we're talking about it, when the state came out and walked through, last week I was here, they're proposing to give us $249,000 for the other Burke Way.
All right, let's highlight that in a minute here. So are we pretty good at getting apartments ready for new tenants? Or could we be better or?
It's just, there's just a lot of them right now. It is, there's just a lot. We are understaffed, and when I say we're understaffed, so we try to make this perfectly clear, we have the number of maintenance men that are allowed in our budget and by the number of units that we have, but it's not enough maintenance men for the infrastructure that all housing authorities, and this is a, this is a housing authority problem. I had Representative Mindy Dong come out two or three weeks ago, Halloween. She came out on Halloween and went through the Amherst properties, and we were really trying to nail that home to her for this new housing bill, is that, so we, I'm fully staffed and have been fully staffed in maintenance, but it's not enough maintenance men for us to do the jobs. And because we have these management agreements, that's how we're able to get more maintenance men. Because we hobble together part-time here, part-time there, and make it a full maintenance man.
And the maintenance people that you do have are as good as they should be?
They absolutely are.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? My question to Pam is, why is it that many years we used outside services like Dion doing the floor, painting companies, and now you're almost 100%? I'm not talking about window projects or big projects. You're, the maintenance men are doing, you know, 99% of this. Who decided that the maintenance is going to do this versus other times when people were called in to do the same work? And they had more time dealing with everyday maintenance issues?
So there's not enough everyday maintenance issues to have a maintenance man? So two or three executive directors ago, you had a housing authority executive director that made the decision to go with contracts. Contractors cost more money than a maintenance person does if they just do. You have to pay prevailing wage. You're at when the maintenance man, or the contractor can come. So when the, Amherst Housing Authority took over, we, well, I'm sorry, when Mary Billion was here, she added a 16-hour-a-week maintenance man to do the tiny repairs, change a lightbulb, fix a blind, maybe unclog a toilet. And then they still called in the contractor when, to do the vast majority of other things. But your budget reserves, you had no money. You spent all your money. But now you're saving money by having the maintenance man. It's not slowing it down. And with this vacancy initiative, they're giving us enough money to hire people to come in and do those.
But don't you think it's possible that you're exhausting the maintenance people? Because of the fact that you said, you have the number that's allowed through your housing authorities, when in the same sense, it's, you just said, it's not enough. So you're, so when people are working, even if they're union workers, they're exhausted workers, and they're more, you know, all I'm saying is that I think a combination of having services come in along with having the daily maintenance.
We do use a combination of them. We've had a painter out here on occasion in the past year. We've had people come and do floors in the past year. We have people that come in and do ramps, do tub cutouts. We use a combination.
That's for reasonable.
No, it's not just for reasonable accommodations.
So we have to trust whoever's looking after maintenance and repair, that they're making the make-or-buy decision smart, smartly, intelligently, whatever. So who looks after all the maintenance now? Bruce has been gone a while. Are you, it's not just you, right? Is there something else?
No, I do oversee, but now we do have a new director of facilities, and his name is John Williams, and we're very excited to have John aboard. He was the maintenance supervisor at the Warren Housing Authority for a number of years. Yeah, coincidentally. But more importantly, he has been in RCAT, the Regional Capital Assistant Team, for three or four years. So he is very well-versed at capital projects. He came in and he hit the ground running. He knows how to use all the different systems that we use.
About the ongoing maintenance and repairs.
As a maintenance supervisor, he's, and he has a construction license.
So has he come up with some ideas? He's been here a month or two now or?
Yep, and he's, no, he's only been here a month.
A month. Has he seen things that could be done better or smarter or faster?
Well, we're really well set up, David. Thank you. We follow all the procedures. We follow the management or the maintenance binder from DHCD.
All right.
But he's very impressed at the level of technology that we have in that maintenance, but he is going to work to improve workflow for the maintenance guys.
Good, good. Guys, I'm just going to comment.
He's the director of facilities.
Director of facilities?
Forgive me for being selfish, but you know, I worked in manufacturing for 20, 30 years, and if we hired a new plant manager, he better come up with some ideas to improve things like workflow or materials costs or whatever, you know, human resource issues or not. And if he doesn't, we're going to start wondering why things aren't at least a little bit better with the new guy. But anyway, that's all I wanted to say about that.
Always encourage people a different perspective.
Good.
Absolutely.
One other question on this. I noticed the expenses were $450,000 against $371,000 of revenue. Have the tenant rents gone down? Because this is a different number than from prior years.
Yeah, the tenant rents would have gone down. It would be due to the vacancies, and then there are a number of tenants that their income has changed.
And so you're in the process of the recertifications right now?
Well, the recertifications go throughout the year. They go when the, when the person moves in, or they're due to be done, they're due to be finalized a month prior to, if somebody moved in January 1st, they would have to be completely done by December 1st. So that is an always-changing number based on people's income. The social security went up, down.
And if we were to believe these numbers, that would leave us at the end of our fiscal year ending September 30th on a $79,000 deficit? And is that coming out of the reserves of $113,000? That's why we're down? I'm not finished, please.
Point reporter. We are still on the fiscal. We haven't voted yet, and you skipped over to.
No, that's where I am. I haven't skipped anywhere.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
I haven't skipped anywhere.
So you're under quarterly operating statements?
You're on the first page, correct? The 70, we're the 79? So that's, that's for the.
First of all, I want to be clear, am I looking at the right report when I'm asking the questions? Because you said I wasn't looking at the right thing.
No, no, we've already clarified that, Gary.
Okay, so thank you. So now, out of the $113,000 that we had in our reserves, $79,000 has now been used because of this budget overage on the expenses. Is that correct?
That's correct, but I just want to point out at the top of it, that's for the 400-1 program, which is our seven.
Okay. Well.
Our family program.
The 667 has a $37,000 deficit. And the 705 has a $41,000 deficit.
Right, so, and the combination is, this is the combination.
Gives me everything.
Yes.
So my clarification is, the $113,000 that we had in our reserves has now been reduced down to that 45% because we had $79,000 of more expenses than we had for revenue.
That's correct.
And I think what David, our chairman, is saying, that expenses generally drive the budget, and we need to look at how we manage expenses because those are costs that we have control over. Revenues are tenant rents, vacancies, DHCD subsidies, all the rest of that. Am I correct?
That's correct, but this 79 is the vacancies that we have. We had a vacancy over 705 that we did completely from reserves. We had a boiler over there that we replaced. If you recall, we actually replaced two boilers over there.
So you expect, you expect the reserve to grow then?
Yes. It'll marginally grow because we're, I mean, we're not raising, we can't raise the rents other than whatever falls into parameters, but we're going to have, we won't be bleeding all of this supplies, contract costs, things of that nature.
So there's no big projects coming up or repair?
There is, but they're covered. We have them covered from other, other resources.
Good. So then reserves should be growing. You say marginally.
Yeah. It took, it took a number of years for us to get where we were.
Correct.
But we, absolutely, we're going to, we're cutting up.
All right, guys. I encourage you all to look at more detail. Harry, you've got a good eye for this stuff. Reese, I'm sure you do too. So if you have the inclination, when you're at home, look at it, bring back questions to Pamela. Just because we're voting to approve it today doesn't mean we can't ask questions or ask for changes. So I'm.
I'm sorry. I'm sure Gary DePace would be fine with an email or a telephone call to him.
Thank you. Okay. From any board member? Okay, great. You heard that. All right. So I'm going to ask for a motion, please, to.
I think we already did that, and now we're just voting.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
And we're not going on the operating, but you're voting on the financials, correct?
The year-end.
The year-end. We've already had our first and our second motion.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Stay.
Stay.
No here.
Okay, three in favor, one abstention, and one nay. Thank you.
Can I walk, Mr. Chairman, can I walk you through the other reports that we need to get signed and?
Sure.
So this is also for the year-end, the fiscal year-end.
What's the time of the page you're looking at?
So the first page is the quarterly consolidated modernization report. So that's, that looks like this, and that should.
So is the same page, is that?
Yeah. You're almost there.
Does it have a page number? Does it have a page number?
It just says 09078.
Right. They should have page numbers.
It would be great to have page numbers on these packages, guys.
I agree.
Or is that.
Here. You got it. You got it.
So this is just an, again, a snapshot at the end of the year where three of our active fish projects or capital projects are. It will show you the funds, the funds approved, and these are DHCD funds. So if you do, if you recall, the window project, we also have Town CPA money too, of $75,000. And then it will show you how much we've expended, and again, a snapshot at the end of the year and where we are. So all three of these, this is not the final report, and they are still open projects. So we just need a motion to approve.
Where does the CPA money show up?
The CPA money doesn't go onto this report because this is accounting, this is an accounting to the executive office of their, the funding that they're giving us.
Okay. Interesting. So they don't care how much we raise independently?
Well, they will, but they won't account, they don't, we don't have to account to it to them. It does go through the.
System, yeah.
The system, yeah.
And then these numbers somewhere in this report here that you put together?
Yes, it would be that last page that we were, that page three of the, where it shows you the mod report, so mod for modernization.
Probably so.
That we were showing, where you thought that the credits and the debits were mixed up.
This mod there.
And the active one that you see is the 117082, which is the window project. It's on the treasures report. Treas, I'm sorry.
And not this report.
That would be under.
It's not this report. It's right here in the treasures report.
Right, here, right, here.
It's the modernization balance sheet though, too. Further, it's further down. Modernization cost control, there's sheets for those, Gary.
What? I'm sorry.
There's modernization balance sheets further in the packet for the quarterly operating statements. It's at the very end, the last three pages?
Of this report.
Of the big, of the quarterly one, yeah.
Okay. Well, I see where they are. So where were we?
We just need a motion and a vote.
This is to approve?
It's to approve this one. So I move, we vote to approve the quarterly consolidated modernization cost report.
I have a second?
I'll do a second.
Motion made by Reese, seconded by Ritchie. Any discussion on the quarterly consolidated modernization cost report? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 No?
No for me.
No, so four in favor, one against. Thank you.
You did the job.
What next?
Okay, and then they're gonna have, so there's some annual forms that we need to fill out as well. So this is a certificate of compliance with notification procedures for federal and state pay laws. So this is just saying that the housing authority is in compliance with those forms. When we have a, when we rent a unit, we supply all the forms. The birthway is too new to have any lead paint, so there's, everyone is given that information. And even in the elderly housing as well, it shows that there's, we give the appropriate forms at least of that we are required. So we just need a vote that says that we're following the federal and state lead paint laws, and then each of you do need to sign.
I'll make that motion to approve this.
Please, thank you.
If I may.
How would you know if people are getting these documents?
Because I'm believing our executive director.
You're gonna trust Pamela?
On this.
It's in the PMR.
Numbers and finances, no, this, yes. That's why I made this motion.
Okay, thank you, Harry.
It's in the PMR.
You're welcome.
So David, if you could sign.
I'm gonna participate when I'm comfortable.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Do I have a second?
Plus, we have to sign this.
I second.
Oh, we all have to sign it?
We do.
Well, I'll say chair.
That's why I made the motion. Thank you.
Okay, what else you got there, Charlie?
So then I have this, at the, at the end of each fiscal year, the housing authorities have to do a check and balance with how the folks are paid, and they, DHCD looks at the top five earners. Now, the Hattley Housing Authority has no employees, and so it shows that that's there. So the Amherst Housing Authority, which has all the employees, does the same thing.
Okay.
And it shows that the commissioners are aware of how much everybody's been paid, and it shows the actual payroll that they're paid. So there's a checks and balance for that, too. So that would be, there's that one, and then
I don't know how much people are making, am I supposed to know?
You would if you were paying us. I mean, if you'd like to know, I can send you that information too, because it's public record.
Yeah.
But I can absolutely send you that information.
Now, what do we have to do for that? Sign and vote on it, or?
This one, you're gonna vote on it, and so there is a certification of the top five compensation form, which I explained was nothing, it's zero. And then the certification of the year-end financial statements and tenant accounts receivable data, which is what you actually already approved. So there is, there's a check rate in the middle. So you just need to make a motion to do the top five compensation as zero, but then you're all gonna sign this with the check in the middle, because that shows that you approved, you approved both. And then so for Harry, who did not choose to vote in favor of the budget, you would just, you could certify the top five only, but you still have to sign. And it gives you that option of what your, but you do still have to sign.
I understand.
Okay.
So you're not alone. I understand.
Okay, so what's happening here is because we are in a management agreement with Amherst, we ourselves have no employees, so we don't have to worry about the top five salaries.
So if you, I would
This one?
I would go down further to the ones that aren't checked there, and then you would certify just to the top five?
Who checked all these?
I started to check them, so Reese and Richard could sign there, but
Why don't we take them in your own, so we don't get confused?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then tell me, check the one who's supposed to check.
Okay.
Top five only.
Hopefully, let's meet a check.
Do we have a vote on the operating budget, right?
We have that.
That's next.
Yeah. Nobody changed.
Saturday, it's coming Saturday.
Do you have this in your form? Do I have it? Okay.
Anything else you got there?
No, I made this.
Well, we are out.
Because I did the certify, I mean, it should have been certified before.
Oh, okay, I made a little check mark there, is that okay?
Yeah, that's not a
Oh, oh, yeah, but I made a check mark over there, too.
Did you vote this?
Okay, so if you could sign it, I do apologize.
This is, yeah, chair.
So this is the annual operating budget, that'll be next.
I haven't gotten the last one to sign.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for this. So we're not waiting for this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what you voted with respect to this.
This one's Harry, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
I recall how you voted. I know I only voted for this.
Okay, David, you sign here, but then Harry signs there.
So did you vote yes to both, or which one? To both the year-end budget and to the lead paint?
I voted yes for the lead paint and for the year-end budget, I did a stain, because I wanted to
Harry, you're there.
Stain from the year-end.
So you wanna, you wanna check where
Because this is the only one I
Just like
That is exactly.
Where Harry checked, that's where you wanna check too.
Of course, I have to sign where he signs.
Right underneath, but you'll check the same box that he checked, which was, is certified to the top five only.
So right under, okay, what
I did what I did. What is she, I don't know what she voted.
Yeah, we
Okay, so just sign at the very next one, and you'll be signing the same thing that Harry signed.
Did the lead paint one go back already?
No, no, it's
I had this right here.
We signed this, didn't we? Pamela, did we sign this one already?
You've already
No, we're
That's the top five compensation.
That's the first one, I thought.
Go back to Pamela.
Yes.
You did.
We signed
You all signed. There is more signing to come, I'm so sorry. That's why it was easier to do it. Okay, but that's good. So the year-end is done.
All right, so now we have the upcoming budget
For the new coming year.
For the upcoming year.
Where's their new copy? Okay, so I would like to collect the budgets that you have in your binder, and I'm gonna replace them. Gary DePace and I worked, and Gary finalized it on Thanksgiving morning, the new revision to get more money. So we're gonna
Okay.
You take one and
Yeah, I'm gonna collect the old ones that are
Take one and pass the
Somebody in there?
It's the, take these, because we've got a revised budget that we're up to date since we found out we're getting more money.
All right, I'm gonna make a point of information just from mine. I'll, I'd get the binder along with the old one. Why don't you keep this one for the, who takes my place? Because I won't need this after next one.
Okay.
So why don't you keep mine and give it to the new person who succeeds me?
Okay.
Because I don't wanna lose it, and you can provide it to them. Thank you.
Okay, so these are Rich's and mine, that's right?
Yeah.
We gave it the whole
Yep. So did you
Sue need one.
Could you give Sue the new one?
I'm giving Sue the new one.
I do.
Don't you think it'd be better to put it in her book, so she wouldn't have to do it and leave her data?
Okay, give me your one. It doesn't matter, just give me your old one.
And I still need a new one.
Yeah, so give me your old one.
I don't have it with me.
No, you did.
It just came in your, it's in your pocket.
I just gave her a new one. Pamela's gonna keep the new one for the new person.
Yeah, but you're gonna vote on this too.
Well, I
It was the one I sent you.
So I'm gonna give you this one back, right?
Yeah. Okay, so the only change So everything else in the budget is the same, and then the changes that we made are because of the budget initiative and figures that we
We're gonna have to sign it up here. I just wanted to
Well, Pamela, a fresh sheet.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
All right, well, we haven't had a time
The reserves are, the revenue is four hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Expenses have increased to four thirty-nine, zero four fifty-three, and the subsidy is one eighty-eight, five fifty-three. And then I'll draw attention to page three of eight. So we are requesting additional legal services fees of three thousand, five hundred dollars. And then we are also increasing under the vacancy initiative
Reese, hand me my back, please.
This is the
I wanna compare. Look what's the last year. Go ahead, I'm listening.
And the vacancy initiative, ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So that's coming, that would come through the budget. That's not the big pot of money that I was talking to the folks about. But if you go through the budget, it lists, you know, everything that we typically list, the revenue, expenses, the administrative costs, maintenance, it'll give you an outline of unit size and apartment size, bedrooms, number of bedrooms. The nonutility costs and the annual, so we get, part of our subsidy covers our utility The schedule of all salaries is not even, but we will be talking about the management fee, the latest management agreement fee, and just solidifying that current figure, because that hasn't changed. You'll see on page five of eight, our workers' comp insurance, the property insurance, the truck insurance. We are anticipating a budget revision at some point for property insurance. We'll do it all at the same time as we can if there's any other changes. Anytime a line item changes plus or minus ten percent, we have to do a budget revision. And we are anticipating the property insurance to go up significantly, because those costs have risen in payouts, especially on the coast and with storms and things. Property insurance is going up, so we do expect to have a budget revision for that.
Do we put that out to be, or how does that work?
That comes through, through the executive office of housing. They, so they were kind of self-insured, but not really. The workers' comp insurance is self-insured through Mass-Narrow. All the housing authorities pool the money together, and we get a better rate that way, but it does come through the Commonwealth. The truck insurance, we do not go out to bid, it is a local, a local company. On page seven of eight, you'll see the budget reserves, what we're calculating for this coming year. And I do anticipate this to change with all the money that we're getting with the budget, with the, through the capital side. I'm hoping we're gonna land better than the forty-five percent for this coming year. And then on the back, on page eight of eight, does show you some of the, our current legal expenses, travel, travel mileage, the spring and fall conference. Spring conference, we have a thousand dollars, but that may filter towards the fall conference. Spring conference is at UMass, so it'll be much more accessible and affordable for local housing authorities in the western Mass. So we'll save a little bit of money there.
That's the first time it's ever in the West, isn't it?
In my time frame.
Yeah.
I don't forever recall it
Okay.
Being anywhere else. And then the contract costs are down below, and that shows you all the different, from our alarm, alarm system, exterminating rubbish, snow removal, boiler maintenance, painting, electrical, plumbing, janitorial services.
So we do contract out to, for like, painting and stuff like that?
This year, this coming year, we've got, and I do anticipate this changing again because of the initiative, eight thousand dollars in painting, eighty-five hundred in electrical, six thousand in plumbing, and then miscellaneous, we have another four thousand.
For whatever comes up, for whatever comes up.
So that's the main part of the budget, but then there will be other votes, too. So this would be the motion, this is the, Harry, I know you don't wanna vote on it, but do you wanna read it?
Well, I have to sign it. It's your budget, but requires the entire board to sign the budget.
Yes, correct.
So if I have to sign the budget as a board member, I have questions on a lot of these numbers.
Absolutely.
That's why I wanted to look at last year's. I know this is last year's, and this is new. A lot of the same, a lot of the categories are the same numbers.
They are, because either if they were able to maintain that figure, or we filtered money somewhere else. So this year, the budget allowed, I'll look up the exact figure, but it was like seven percent above last year's revenue. And then we're allowed to fit that within the budget in the, in the different line items. So if we had a line item such as, like water and sewer, if water and sewer stayed pretty stable, we would keep that line item, and we would filter the money somewhere else, like contract costs, to get a plumber out, or whatever else we wanted to find. But it stays within these same categories.
All right, so those categories stay the same amount of money, even though if you look at the actual expenses, they might be less, or they might be more, but you're making, you're keeping the same budget number and making the adjustments elsewhere? And I'm only asking the question because you're gonna require me to sign your budget going forward.
No, no, it's a good, it's a good question. No, we would, we would, some things we keep level based on if we're able to keep that number straight, like our, our costs would cent us. It's a flat budget of, you know, we pay eighty-two dollars a month for an eyewash station, that stays the same. That hasn't changed, so that, that contract cost would still be the same, excuse me. We would keep that line item the same. Postage, we're doing a lot more postage, that should go up a little bit to compensate. Salaries have gone up, which are not reflected on your budget, so that, that number stays the same.
The only thing that goes up is the management fee.
If the management agreement went up, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll call for a vote on the annual operating budget. Do I have a motion, please?
I move that we accept the annual operating budget for the next fiscal year.
Can I have you read that, that motion?
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's right in front of David.
Is it this one?
No, it's the one right there. Yes, please. And that gives you the, it's very detailed of what
Okay. So
Right there, yep.
I move that we accept the proposed operating budget for state-aided housing of the Hattley Housing Authority, chapter six-six-seven, seven-oh-five. Those are the only two we have, right? Program number four-zero-zero-one for fiscal year ending nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-four, showing total revenue of four hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars in account number three thousand, and total expenses of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand and fifty-three dollars in account number four thousand, thereby requesting a subsidy of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars in account number thirty-eight-oh-one, and further that the executive director's total annual salary of zero dollars for fiscal year ending nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-four be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for its review and approval. So that's my motion. Yeah, for a second?
Can you make the motion?
Okay.
Do I have a second, please?
No, second it.
Second, Richie, on the operating budget. Any other discussion? And, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Because they're your numbers. You put them together, you better live with them. I'm voting yes.
Congratulations, Harry.
Doesn't require any applause.
One abstention, one abstention.[1791.12] One abstention, one or one abstention. Excuse me. It's a motion passes.
I will add one thing, though, on the budget. As the year progresses and you're looking at these line items and how things are progressing, if fuel costs go up, oil, whatever. You make those adjustments when you pay the bills and all of that, that's all the operation under your jurisdiction.
Right, you see that every month, and then if it, if it goes up plus or minus ten percent, then we come to the board and we have to do a budget revision.
So it's a work in process as the year unfolds, but you have a budget.
Absolutely.
That's why I voted yes.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, great. So I'm passing around, I'm passing around the signature page for this, too. Everyone does have to sign regardless of how you voted. And then the other part of it is, it is in the budget, but they do like, so this is the management agreement worksheet that we did just when we renewed the contract. So you're, it's just here again, and then you would be voting on, that the, it shows you that the, you would be paying thirty-seven thousand, if you had your own executive director, you could at most pay thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five. I don't know. Let's see, do we have the budgets? These are the old budgets.
What was that number we could pay?
Thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven, nine sixty-five.
Thirty-seven, I'm sorry.
Nine sixty-five.
Your names are already printed through this. It's a date.
So that the, so the negotiated management fee that we had when we resigned this, and that is, is in place for this current budget, is forty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars, and that's in the budget. So you just need to make a motion and vote that you're, you know, that that's the figure that's in there, in the boot.
So just say, I move that.
Yeah, that, that.
I move that we, is it approved?
I would say, confirm?
I move that we confirm the management agreement amount of, yeah, forty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars for this next fiscal year, ten-one, twenty-twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
That's correct.
What, what was the number, forty?
It's forty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six.
I thought we had thirty-seven thousand, nine sixty-five.
No, that was last year.
No, it's, so the, it shows you how much you could pay your own director, and then with the worksheet that DHCD gives out, do you see the page that she has there? They allow you to get one point five percent for the management agreement fee.
And that allows, allows you to supply maintenance, staff time.
We, it's, we build, it, it just, admin time.
Admin time, okay.
And that's the figure that we've always negotiated, is the one point five percent over. That's what the current management agreement is.
This is a separate motion?
It's, I've already moved. Do you want to second?
No, second it.
Any other discussion? This is the management fee calculation worksheet approval.
But we've already.
That's, that is in your packet, Harry.
All, all those in favor?
It's just confirming it. We've already voted on it last.
All those in favor of confirming?
I don't, I don't have that.
Aye.
Aye. No, Harry?
No. But what is it?
Just confirm what we already.
I don't have this in my packet.
It may not be in the packet, but I remember seeing what we did with management agreement.
It's attached to the old budget. That's the old list. It's attached to the old budget.
You want to give it to him?
He already looked at it.
It was all attached to the old budget.
Okay. Oh, we, we handed in the old budget, so it's attached, you're gonna have to give the old budget.
Yeah, here, here it is, right here.
Okay, so it wasn't attached to the new, but the revised budget?
I wonder how much it cost to have all that stuff printed up?
A lot, unfortunately.
Lots of trees, lots of trees.
All right. This signature page is for the budget.
That's just for the budget.
Not the management fee.
That's correct. Well, the management fee is in the budget, but yes.
But the management fee requires a separate vote.
Just, right, to solidify that that's what, what we've been paying. I'll take my, and then she just needs to stand up.
All right. Anything else to be signed, Pamela?
I don't think so. Thank you.
You know, you've got the unit vacancy reports. Who reads this off?
That could be me.
Hey, listen, part of your.
What are we on now?
The window, no.
Yep.
Unit vacancy report.
So we do, we had one move in and one, unfortunately, we had it passing, so it's pretty much looks the same. So four at Golden Court, and then as of September thirtieth, it was one at Berkway, but in this, in October, we moved the other resident. So there's, there will be, you will see for the October report that it's two.
So there's two on the Berkway. How fast do you think you'll be able to fill those apartments at Berkway?
Well, the one, the, the current one that's about ready to go out to bid, I would estimate four to six months based on construction because contractors are behind, unfortunately.
That's the Berkway?
That's the Berkway. The other one with the two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar price tag that DHCD put on it, or HLC put on it, I anticipate that to be, and the, the unit is not in good shape.
You can build a house for that much, how much they.
Prevailing wage. You have to pay prevailing wage, state complex. So there's just that, and then we have.
Let me ask you, I'm sorry, let me ask you, what's the rent at Berkway?
It depends on the tenant's income. All income is.
What's the range, approximately?
The range is approximately from a hundred and twenty-five dollars, yep, to, I think the highest rent over there is eleven hundred.
Okay, thank you.
It's a big range.
So, all right, so to estimate how much we lose by not having income for five months, can't we do that?
No. But we still, when we have it in a project and we have it approved a waiver, we still get the subsidy for the year. So that does help the housing authority.
Okay, that's something.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
And then the report, the tenant accounts receivable is still, this has been updated since October, we'll have better figures. We had a very successful court intervention with one of the tenants that owes a significant amount of money, that we're able to get that tenant into a repayment agreement, clear up late fees, and get them, preserve their tenancy while getting the money back from the housing authority. So that should show favorable. It'll be better next month.
It'd be great to see this put into a chart form so the commissioners could see whether numbers are going up or down. Just a casual suggestion here. Some work orders, window project update?
Yep, so the work orders, we had one inspection, five requests. They've been working on the two vacancies here. They did just, they did finish one of them, and then you can see on the next couple of pages, the further brings out from emergencies, inspections, on-call emergencies, more requests, and scheduled, scheduled maintenance. We did just remove a lot of ACs from the windows. I did get, I have knowledge of lots of folks that are gonna be putting in a reasonable accommodation now that we have new windows to keep their ACs in. I haven't received all the paperwork from the tenants, but I don't think it's really gonna be a big deal, if they'll, if they'll be able to keep them in.
Good.
I, I really like this format where you divide it out into types of maintenance, like the emergency, the on-call, the et cetera, on-call emergency, inspection, et cetera. It's a really nice format.
Thank you, and, and that is from PHA, though, and that's, that's where a good indication of where that software company works with the, with the executive office, because then when they do the PMR audits, which is, that includes maintenance and help timely, we do have to break it down into those categories.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, thank you, Pamela. We're on the board correspondent.
Oh, can I do the capital? I'm sorry.
Did I miss something?
Yeah, the capital. So not just, so the window project is done, and there is a certificate of final completion that is, that the architect approved, the construction advisor approved, I approved, and then it still just needs approval from HLC before it comes to the board, and the board will make the final determination that the project is, is completed and that we can pay out the contractor. So that's still, that, that will probably be in next month's meeting that we can pay that. So the second part that, of the help, which we've talked a little bit about it today, but is the vacancy initiative, is there, there is that one sign where I can, we can go through a budget exemption and ask for that additional ten thousand, four hundred and some odd dollars for, for units that we've already started to work on. The other part of it is where the construction advisor or facilities management person, and in our case, it was our construction advisor, Tom Boyer, met with me and John Williams, our new director, and Kyle Curtis, our maintenance supervisor, and we went into every vacant unit. And the, not only are they giving us funding that we could hire a contractor to, to come out and replace some things, they're giving us money to get our units up to a, a position that we're not gonna have to, if the tenant moves out in a year, they're gonna be really good units. They're gonna have new cabinets that are solid cabinets as opposed to some of the units here have particle board on the side, which is a little surprising, but they're gonna get rid of those. Two of our six-six-seven units, I have reasonable accommodations from both an applicant and an internal tenant, and they're giving us fifty thousand dollars for each of those units to get those to have more of an ADA type. It's not gonna be a full ADA unit, but bathroom facility, so that's gonna be really good. The remaining of the units here are not overly bad. We, we got really great cost for a guy to come in and refinish the floors. Berkway has beautiful, excuse me, Golden Court has beautiful wood floors, and, you know, over time, they need scuffing up and, and refinishing, so we've got some good prices for somebody to come in and do that. Cabinetry in those ones as well. So they're putting about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars on each of those remaining units. But the Berkway one that did not have a capital project, which is the newest one, they're talk, they're two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So this is above and beyond the capital money that we got through the annual plan with the five-year plan. It's, it's a huge amount of money that the state is, is offering up to us. So we're just waiting for the final approval. That'll come to the board, and they'll be, you have to accept the funds, except that the contract for financial assistance is being extended. But it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity. It's my understanding from working with HLC that not all housing authorities are taking advantage of this, which I don't know why they wouldn't, but that's not my place to say.
Good for you for getting the money.
But we are, so we have a lot of money coming in that hopefully will help shore up our, our budget reserves, stabilize that, and get these units back online. And as I mentioned, the champ, the, the change in the champ, we, we have three people already vetted and ready to go, it's just maintenance ready. Now, at this point, we're waiting for maintenance ready. So it's, it's looking up for sure.
Thank you. Guys, we've been at this already for an hour and a half plus, hour and three-quarters, am I right?
Yeah, it'll be two hours and ten minutes.
But there's a couple of things which I did not want to delay and keep delaying, especially a review of the policies. And Reese and Harry and Richie, I gotta ask you guys, what state are the, the policy reviews that you guys had worked on at? Do we have revised or reviewed policies to present to the whole board for their review?
No.
I know they're going to Pamela and the tenants at some point.
Do you want to report?
Okay.
Okay, so our report is, Rich and I, we look through every single local policy, and those are the ones that are only for Hadley Housing Authority. They have nothing to do with what the state requires. So we looked through all of them, and there were two policies that, well, Sue, you brought up, the common area and the garden policy, the, you know, flowerbed policy. And so Rich and I worked on it. We have it in draft format, as I have reported before. It is sitting with Pamela, who's been, I understand, crazy busy since August with this vacancy initiative, and now you've got to, in the window project, and now you've got the renovation initiative. So we're waiting for Pamela to be able to sit down with us and go through those and tell us what she recommends. Our thing is, as a board, we don't want to sign our name to a policy that violates local or state law. And there's other things that Pamela knows that other housing authorities do that maybe we haven't thought of, and these need to, since they affect tenants, we, Pamela's already said she wants the tenants involved, at least when we get it into draft form. So we have it in a draft form, it's ready to go. Pamela will review it, and then my understand is that we take it to the, we talked to the tenants about.
So you say it, you mean them, you mean all the policies?
No, no, we.
Just the two.
The two. You have to understand, these policies take a lot, a lot of. So, so we, we have, as.
Mr. Chairman.
As, I will finish. As, as Sue suggested, we worked on the common area policy and the garden policy. We have also reviewed every single local policy.
Excellent.
And, and so.
Thank you so much.
Let's get through those two, and then we can, you know, take on.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna, okay, Sue.
We have brought up the common policy and the grounds policy over and over at meetings who have yet to see them in front of us. Why don't you give us the, the work on copy so we can bring it home and look at it before it goes through Pam? You're, you're talking about.
Her name's Pamela, sir.
Pamela. I'm just asking to look at them, because how many times do we have to bring up these two policies specifically we've asked for?
Okay, okay, so.
And want, and want to see them.
Thank you.
So can you give us, because it said copies of, so I was expecting to see these worked-on copies, not, not the final draft of these copies, but what you.
I'm not so sure, you're talking about copies of what?
All right, so, excuse me, guys. So I don't want to drag out a lot of what we did and didn't do in the past.
Well, this is an important thing, because we've brought it up so many times, and I think we should address it.
So moving forward, I'd like all the commissioners to review your work up to date, and we don't have to take votes, we don't have to edit, but I'd like all of us to see your revised revisions, any changes you have, and for just for our consideration and to get ready for further discussion. Obviously, you're not ready to hand over copies to us today, but I either want a special meeting, or I'm gonna ask you to leave them at the office or something. So let's sort of, all of us pitch in to try to move towards some revised policies. And I'm never gonna blame Pamela for not getting to stuff in time when she's got some of the other things on her plate, but if you want to start with those two, that's fine with me, too.
But I thought we were starting on it today, because we have to do it eventually sometime when we bring it out.
So they're, they're ready today to be handed out?
If I could just say, so again, especially in policies that affect the tenants, we really need, I need to meet with the tenants, not the commissioners. It's the, it's the housing authority needs to meet with tenants to get the tenants' input on it, and it has been brought up and up because of the, the window project, but it was an issue that was not supposed to be very, very brought up at that time.
Okay, so.
Because it was personal. But, so I would really like to have the opportunity to meet with the tenants, and to review it, too, to make sure that there's.
I will never get in the way of you meeting with the tenants and having us review at least these first two.
Again, we'll put it off for another time.
No, I'm saying, let's, let's get those in the next few days from you guys. And Pamela, you meet with the tenants whenever you're ready, whenever you think that we've all talked about them and reviewed them, if that's the procedure you want. I don't care about when you meet with the tenants. I'm super happy to have the tenants review these first two policies. They obviously affect everyone's lives.
I would like as a board.
In the meantime, I would like the board, all five of us, to review these first two policies, the outdoor policy and the garden policy. Sue, I know this has been a, an important thing to you, and I don't, and I'm embarrassed that the months keep passing by and we've never reviewed or discussed them. Pamela, you do anything you want with the tenants, got nothing to do with what I'm talking about. I just want all the commissioners to get up to speed to the, with the good work that Richie and Reese have done so far. And we can either keep our mouths shut moving forward when, next time we meet about ideas we have. If Pamela's met with the tenants and has those ideas first, great. I don't care what order we all make our opinions about the revised.
Can I just, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I think that the board should take a look at them before they go to the tenants. Because one of our duties as a commissioner is to look at policy.
It's to prove it, it's to prove it of the final edition. But again, the tenants do have an input into.
We might get some good ideas from the tenants. We might get some good ideas from.
You're kind of out of, out of order here, but if you want to go out of order, that's fine.
Just for those two policies, because we brought them up so many times.
No, Sue, I'm so sorry, you have brought it up. You brought it up during the window project.
And it's important, yes.
But it shouldn't have been brought up again, and that was a little bit of an ethics problem.
What did you brought again? We brought it up so many times on the agenda, it's never been dealt with. How many times have you put it on the agenda before it's?
Well, it's winter time. I don't know how urgent it is to discuss the outdoor space and garden policy. But Pamela brought up a really good idea. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. I had talked about doing some plantings, and Pamela kind of interrupted me with a better idea, which is, what about a real landscape plan for Golden Court and Brookway? We've got two famous landscape academic organizations within 10 mile zones here. One up in Conway, the School of Landscape Design, and one at the University of Massachusetts, the Department of Landscape Design. I forget exactly, but it's proper name is, who I've worked with before. They're all good people. The faster we can all get our opinions on the table early, maybe the rest of the summer, you know, February, March, January, February, March, can be used to bring in a couple of maybe grad students or professors who would look at our plan, give us two, three, four hours of their time for a reasonable price or no price. And by April or March, you know, planting time, we will have all reviewed what we think would work for this place, and we'll end up with a more beautiful place to live here. So I'm just trying to move it from the commissioner's standpoint along. I think the tenants are going to have better ideas than we have, because we live here. You and Sue live here, Reese, so your ideas are going to be the most interesting of all.
Did you want to follow the agenda and go through all individual policies today?
No, so let me, let me look at this right now, because our meetings have gotten too long and I didn't realize we'd be doing the document signing and stuff. It's all very important stuff. We have another, the PHN, the Public Housing Notice 2023-05 we wanted to discuss today. I think we're getting to be out of time. And then Sue, you asked for some other documents from Pamela. I hope you can get those off camera, and Jess, would you take care of that off camera?
Aren't they in the board folder?
Well, I asked for it in the meeting. It's on the meeting agenda, so I was hoping they would be here after the meeting.
They're right here.
Right.
They're right here.
Okay, great, thank you, guys. So Reese, can you take the lead? You need to lead on this. Can you show us the initial revision of the outdoor garden policies as you've done, and leave them for us?
Grounds policy.
Three copies?
I don't have copies with me right here, because I didn't realize.
Not today, not today.
Okay.
Can I help? So Reese had emailed me the revisions for me to look at. I could, I could send those out.
Beautiful, I didn't know that, thank you so much.
Yeah, I can email them all to the board.
And again, I'm going to repeat it, since there's argument, it seems, about this. This is not to discourage or interfere with the tenants looking at this stuff and Pamela having a chance to meet with the tenants about this stuff or talk to them individually about it, I don't care. I just don't want the commissioners to be way behind the curve when, when this, when the suggestions come forward.
I would like to say that, okay, so Pamela has offered to mail out the, email out the drafts that, of those two policies that Rich and I came up with. Just please, everyone, they're rough drafts. We followed a template out of a university. So if the format is off-putting or the language is off-putting, it's just because that's.
Right, and please consider these confidential documents, if there's. You have to do that over-stamped thing when you email stuff. Confidential, you can put a.
I think that's a good point, yes.
You can put a watermark, you know, do, put a watermark, say confidential. So these initial drafts are not public, okay? And Pamela, if you could put a watermark on them saying confidential.
Do we, or do we all understand that? It's not going to be shared with Melkeen, Sue?
Why would you say that? There's copies, there's suit for every.
Melkeen or the tenants' union or Warren Housing, it's their confidential.
All right, I don't want to focus on individuals here. All right, thank you, guys. Reese, thank you very much. All right, I don't know if we'll have any opinion, so our updates are ourselves. Harry.
Did we go by the commissioners' discussion?
No, we're in it right now.
Oh, okay, because, all right.
And if there's anything that's urgent today, let's talk.
Okay, I want, following Commissioner Reese, I'd like to make the motion that the chairman contacts the Warren Housing Authority to inquire, the chairman.
Me?
You're the chairman.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was distracted, I'm sorry. Start again. You'd like to make a motion that the chairman of this board contacts, go ahead.
When we were discussing the treasures report and the budget numbers and all that, Reese, Commissioner Reese said that if there was any inquiry about anything, it should be a board vote and unacknowledged. And Sue brought up about Gary DePace not having his contract renewed in Warren. So I make a motion that the chairman contact, because I'm curious why the contract wouldn't be.
Contact who?
Contact the Warren Housing Authority to inquire why the contract was not renewed with Gary DePace. He's our fee accountant. If something is serious there or something's happened, I think that we ought to.
All right, there's a motion, I'll use a second.
I can, I can talk to him afterwards.
You know why?
I think, I have, I've heard some things, but yeah.
So should I make the motion, or should we just discuss it now?
It's inappropriate to discuss it in an open meeting with a chairman.
So should I, you asked me to make the motion, that's why.
No, I didn't ask you to make a.
No, you said if we wanted information, we should make a motion, or a board vote.
There has to be a forum board vote. Individual board members cannot take off like a wild air and do something.
Okay, I appreciate that you would share that with me after the meeting, however.
You could still.
However, I'm still going to make the motion, because he is our fee accountant. If something has happened that other housing, I mean, he has a lot of housing authorities under his wing, and he's been doing this a long time. So not to have a contract renewed, something must happen. So I'm making a motion that somebody, and I think it would be our chairman, to inquire of the Warren Housing Authority why the contract is not being renewed with the fee account.
Hold on a second.
Hold on, hold on. You can second, and then I'll just.
Okay.
Second? Sue, second?
Second.
Now discussion.
Can I have the, can I ask for the, the motion to be amended to say to reach out to Warren Housing Authority to confirm, because it is a rumor, it's a rumor, to confirm, and then to inquire about why? Because it's just.
That's fine, I'm just curious, because he's our fee accountant as well.
Understood.
And I have asked in the past for review of financial records and things, and not bringing up anything else other than that, I've asked in the past. So I'm just curious why, what went on down there?
If you're interested, we can make that call together if you prefer. It's up to you. All right, we have.
I do think that it should be followed up by a board member calling, though.
That's what this is. All I said was to confirm. The only change I made was to confirm.
No, I appreciate that.
Gary is asking that David call.
Yeah, because there's no, nothing factual unless you hear it factual.
And I haven't heard of exactly who I'm supposed to call, so I guess I'll be calling.
Warren Housing Authority. So there is, I can give you the name of the executive director. It's, they're, they're actually the Barry Housing Authority. They're under a management, a short management agreement, a six-month management agreement. And then I can get you the name of the chairperson as well. And I've got contact information.
Not a three-year management agreement, only six months?
Oh, I can, I can fill you in.
Okay, thank you for the amended.
Any other discussion, any other discussion about finding out why Gary DePace may not be employed up in Barry anymore anymore? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 No.
No. No, three in favor, two against, motion passes. All right, we've got some other important stuff to do. I don't know if you guys want another meeting before the January, when's the next?
December 19th, I believe.
One final thing on the discussion.
Yes.
Where are we with the ads for the executive director? Have we abandoned that? Has that gone by the wayside and I'm not aware of it, or is it all?
It's not on the agenda today.
I don't know.
It was abandoned during the special. Could I have a few clarifications? Number one, Reese, what did you say? You were going to give the copies of the common area?
I'm not, I am, I'm going to send it out.
You're going to send that to all of you?
By email.
By email.
Yeah. And my understanding, Pamela, is that when, that when you have policies, we don't know through your tenants' organization, I didn't ever heard of running through tenants in general. It's not before the board has been privy to seeing themselves, because that's one of our duties as a commissioner, is to deal with policies. And I feel like it's been kept away from us.
So I'm trying to, as a tenant, I'm trying to get it into the tenant's hands. The board would approve it ultimately, but you would get the feedback from the tenants to make sure that it's something, that we listen to what their reasons are for having certain, you know, maybe somebody wants rose bushes grow out, or they, they think that they should be able to have more than two chairs on the front, whatever it is. We listen to the tenants, and then it comes to the board, and the board finally approves it. As far as a tenants' association, tenants do not need to organize to have rights. Tenants have the right to say what is happening in development. So I don't have a tenants' meeting, so the tenants have the right, even though we don't have a tenants' association.
Oh, I guess it better.
And I would like to, Mr. Chairman, I would like to have another meeting to finish up what we didn't get to today and to, because of the fact that I prepared a, you know, a little talk on the PHN, and I think it's very important, and.
December 19th is our next meeting, that's about.
No, I mean before the next 19th, because, because I feel that, you know, the, because of the fact that we've asked for the common grounds of the.
You want to do it today?
Well, not necessarily, it's just that the two things that I requested are being cut out of, being accomplished.
So do you want it today, or do you want to schedule a meeting? It's up to you, I'm around almost all the time.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I would like to move that we table the remainder of the agenda until our December 19th meeting, because we are already two hours and 10 minutes. And I think it's really important to have ten, participate. Because they not want to come.
I'm not going to, I'm not, I'm going to allow the public comment part of this agenda. If you were hoping to cancel that, I think.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't, I just, I have to take a break, so.
Okay.
I'll give them the room for a few minutes.
Okay. So are you saying you want another meeting before December 19th, or you want to discuss those things?
Or either that or move up the meeting closer and have it closer to the, because of the fact that we didn't get. I just feel like every time I bring up something and finally getting on the agenda, it's pushed away. And I, it's very important, and it's very frustrating as a board member.
So what are the things you wanted to discuss, Sue?
The PHN 2023 dash zero five.
Right, and just copy that, but again, yeah.
And if you don't want to do it now, I think waiting till the 19th is a long time to wait.
All right, go ahead, let's do it.
Well, I mean, okay.
Well, you want Reese to come back?
That's what matters, you can watch it on YouTube, it's up to you. Well, the PHN 2023 dash zero five is a public housing notice. This public housing notice comes from the new inspector general to give guidance to boards regarding the fiscal responsibility of a housing board. The board has an important fiduciary duty to safeguard the housing authority. Board members serve as a check and balance to protect against fraud and abuse of housing authorities. There are many examples of policies that I looked at that protect the budget, management, and housing authority. A board's diligence in adopting these recommendations will safeguard the housing authority. DHCD will assist small and medium housing authorities to access legal services through regional legal services programs and a budget exemption for hiring pre-qualified attorneys. Board of Commissioners have a legal obligation to call for an independent audit and to obtain an attorney to question the reserves to cover the costs. So when Pamela talked about having an audit coming up, once again, it's being done, the audit is being done by the Department of Housing and Community Development, so basically they're auditing their own selves. But this, this PHN 2023 dash zero five is saying that the Board of Commissioners have a legal obligation to call for an independent audit, to obtain an attorney, and to question the reserves and cover the costs. So what I wanted to do today is to open up for discussion and take a vote once again for having an independent audit.
Well, that's enough.
What does it say?
And Lisa Fallon is an independent auditor. She does not work for the housing authority, and she does not work for the executive office.
No, but it's the same people that keep coming back over and over again to do the audits, and I understood that they, Harry, you chime in here. Didn't you understand the fact that the audits were done by DHCD accountants?
They're done, they're done by Iowa when he gets there, but then they're audited. The, the HLC gets audited by their own auditors, and the housing authority gets audited by auditors.
So I was opening it up again for a vote to have.
You can't, it's not on the agenda. You have to have it on.
It is, because it's the PHN and that's.
No, if you have to have it specific, the agenda has to be clear enough that what you're talking about, so you're asking for an independent audit. You would have to have that.
Okay, so let's open it up for at least the discussion part. At least now that I went over, we have to open it up for a discussion.
I want to make sure you got the quote right. What does it say, the board members have a legal obligation for their audit?
It's on my, it's on my paperwork.
On my copy that I've highlighted.
Right.
I have one, two, three, four, five, six, six bullet down is board members. Board members shall ensure that there are strong policies and controls surrounding the use of LHA, local housing authorities, cash handling and credit cards. Take out credit cards, we don't have credit cards. But the cash handling, the reports, the financial numbers, and why, through, through months and months, I've been asking why we score independent audit. I haven't brought it up, but we brought up this PHN. There is a responsibility of this board to ensure that we're compliant, that numbers are accurate, financials are being recorded accurately. And Gary DePace puts together the treasury reports and his accounting, and then it's independently reviewed by Lisa Fallon, who's affiliated with him some way, same place, same address. They know each other, she's done it for five years. He's been the fee accountant here for I don't know how long. So I, I haven't changed my position on an independent, objective audit by someone not involved with putting together the reports and looking at the numbers and auditing them all. I have said that publicly, month after month after month, until a number of months ago, I said I wouldn't bring it up again. And I'm not going to continue to bring it up because of this.
Yep, so what, what the Attorney General came to the Mass Network Conference and spoke, and he is a very stern person. There is a class coming up through the, the Inspector General's office for board members to learn, to talk about what was found in this, this PHN and the backstory to the PHN and how to avoid that. One of the most important things that you read, Sue, was that you have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure the finances, which means every month you go over the finances that you're given 48 hours in advance of the meeting, and you vote on it. You don't abstain from it. That's one of your duties, is to every single month, review it.
And this particular one, the, the copy I have with the PHN actually says, as the last paragraph, quote, you know, the Board of Commissioners have a legal, it's, it's not exactly the same one, the one that you've handed out. The last paragraph is Board of Commissioners have a legal obligation to call for an independent audit and to obtain an attorney to question the reserves to cover the costs. And that's, I mean, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be handing these out if they didn't think that it was an important thing for boards to do.
Independent audit, we do have, we have two.
We've never called it an independent audit.
She's in, we do, it's, that's the guidelines. If you read the full guidelines, I can get you that for the next meeting, the PHN about the AUP audits. It'll tell you, you have to hire an independent auditor. But these are the ones that are verbalized through HLC.
Is there a exemption, exemption or exception made for the expense of the independent audit or legal expenses we have?
Yes, there is.
Does the.
No, it's, what you would do is you would put in, you would do a budget revision and you would have to pay for it with your budget reserve. Because there's not, there is a line item for the independent auditor, so for the, so, but that would cover the audit that we're required to have no matter what. If you choose to do another audit, that comes out of your reserves. But the independent audit that is Lisa Fallon or whoever the next person is that we choose, that, there is a line item already.
And our legal expense, do we have an exemption, any state support for legal expenses?
We do, that's, we use the regional attorney that they're talking about. We use, and they give us funding and then if you look at the, what we just, the revision where we ask for the budget exemption, we ask for more funding for that as well. But that's all through the, that is through the regional program, so we use that as well.
Will we get that funding?
I hope so, I hope so.
Mr. Chairman, the actual paragraph says, DHCD will assist small and medium housing authorities to access legal services through regional legal service programs and a budget exemption for hiring pre-qualified attorneys.
That's what we have right now. And we've had that for years in Hadley.
But it's the same, what we're saying, it's the same people over and over again. It's not, you say ever so often you have to switch.
Let me ask it differently.
We do through the auditor, but not through the lawyer. The lawyer doesn't have any conflict of interest. And if they did, they wouldn't take the case, we'd have somebody else for that one case. But the regional attorney that we use, Hadley Housing Authority has been using this regional attorney for decades. And there's nothing wrong with that regional attorney, nothing.
No one's saying there's something wrong, but it's just good to have another set of eyes looking at, at the figures of a house.
And this is what I was talking about earlier in the meeting when you, when I said that there's all these new people coming in that saying we're going to upset the apple cart. It's not just that, it really is. If I come.
A tenant's a liar, it's not upsetting, it's important, tenant or report commander.
Pamela, if you weren't happy with our accountant, our fee accountant or our auditor or our attorney, and you wanted to change them, would you have to get the executive office's permission to change? Or as long as you stayed within the same budget amount, you can choose whoever you'd like?
I don't need the executive office's decision, but what, there is a contract with the regional attorney and there is a contract with the, with the auditor too. So if we decided to change the regional attorney, I would come to the board and say, this is the list and I'd like to use this one. And the board would approve that contract and then I would sign the contract. So you would, but you would go through the list of the folks. And these folks were vetted for their knowledge of either employment law or tenant law. And also that they have that, they use that same dollar amount, they've agreed to that same dollar amount.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
How do you get on that list? Do they have to apply?
So they do, they do a request for proposal and we actually had a meeting up in Holyoke two weeks ago. The executive office came out, there were over twenty of them. It was a very informative meeting with the executive directors and I brought John, Director of Facilities, about a lot of stuff that's happening. And they were saying to us to really talk to contractors in our area, because there is such a shortage of contractors, to see, will you apply to be on the approved list, a DKM certification? If you have, if you know a good lawyer, have a lawyer, you know, go through, there's a request for proposal.
To get on the list.
To get on the list, so that they can vet them, and the same thing with accountants too. You know people, get them on, you know, get them on the list, have them contract HLC so that they can get approved. Because more options is always better.
So are there other fee accountants besides Gary that's on this list that you can choose a different fee accountant?
Absolutely, yeah. And then the auditors, the independent auditors that DHCD approves for those yearly AUPs, they cannot do their own housing authority. So like Gary's office actually is an audit office, he's an approved state auditor too. But he's out in the eastern part of the state auditing those. And it is, it's a very small number. I believe in the entire Commonwealth, we only have six fee accountants. It's very small, because it's such.
Two hundred and forty-eight housing authorities.
Exactly, it's a very niche market.
Wow.
Very niche market.
All right, I'm going to move on to the public comment, just to make sure that's not too important. Anybody from the public have anything they would like to address the commissioners with?
Judy. I do. I have had some paperwork here to submit to the office that needs to be stampeded and copied for here. I've been down here four different times, on either a Monday or a Friday, the office is always closed. There's never anybody here. The posted hours are Monday and Friday. I come down here, can't get it done.
Okay, let me stop you there Judy. Pamela, are we having irregular hours right now for something?
So we do have the new property manager that is doing most of her training in Beltratown. And then myself, Carrie, and Pam Creek are covering the office when we can. The new property manager did come down with COVID as well, so that caused another issue. So, but we're working through it. And this one colleague has come down, I actually have an email from you about your interaction with Carrie. So she's been here, she's, we're here, we're here. And they can always call the number and they should, she should call the office or send me an email and say, I have this paperwork I'd like to drop off. And I would, we would come over and make sure we're here for her.
And how would we, how would we know that?
You can call the office or email and make an appointment.
How would the tenants know that they can do that?
I think you're very well versed at picking up the phone or sending me an email.
It's in the newsletter.
I'm not answering for every tenant, I'm answering to you. You asked me a question about you, I can talk to you about you, I'm not talking about other tenants.
Well, I do, I do speak to tenants.
But you don't speak for the.
The tenants are having.
We do not have that information, I don't have that information.
What information?
I can, I can, I've answered the question.
It's in the newsletter.
Yep, it is.
To how to get ahold of the office, you know how to do that.
And it's on the window too.
It's on the window.
Judy, I know, when I call the office, you never, you don't get a live person, so I guess it just takes some pictures.
You get transferred from here to there to here to there. And I'm not the only one that can't, excuse me.
Right.
I'm not the only one that has issues trying to get ahold of somebody in the office. There are tenants that don't know how to use the phone as well as I do. They don't know how to read the newsletter like I do. The office should be open.
On days that's posted?
It should be open when it says it's, when there's posted hours, whether or not. So this is going in very, very late, because you can't get in, you can't get anybody in it. And when you do, like there was when somebody here was so incredibly rude to me that, don't shake your head, you weren't here, you didn't see or hear what happened.
I'm not going to speak, yeah, it's okay.
I don't think any tenant should be, I never come down to the office for that very reason. And when I did, that person was so incredibly rude to me, she slammed the curtain down in front of my face. I mean.
Okay, look, these are operational things.
This is not elderly housing.
Would you please write a letter to the executive director and see if you can't get some satisfaction?
I did, I did.
Okay.
But I don't get any satisfaction there either, so.
Well, maybe there should be a training in customer service.
Yeah, there should be.
We've had it, there's responsibilities on the tenant's side and it's also in the lease, the way that a tenant interacts with the housing authority contractors and commissioners. It's a two-way street.
And staff, yeah.
And staff, right, so.
What else you got, Judy?
The other thing is maintenance, work orders and maintenance. Contrary to what I heard here, I sent a work order in via email four times to have my storm windows put on my apartment. Four times. A date was set by Pamela Creek. No one showed up. Maintenance is.
Please.
Talk about rudeness.
All I can do is say, please take it to the executive director and see if you can't get some satisfaction if it goes on.
But maintenance is supposed to be here on Thursday. They're not, they're never, they haven't been here for weeks. And when Pamela told me they were going to be here one day, no one showed up. Maintenance is being taken away on Thursday, which is the only day that we do have work orders. And we can't get them done.
I understand you've had work orders in and nobody's come.
Nobody came, nobody, they don't respond when you.
I'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Can I just point out that there's the work order list and that they did over fifty work orders in the month of September?
Not here, not here.
It is here, it's not a lie, it's from the software system. These are, that's how the commissioners are overseeing it, is that you see the number of work orders that we're doing. And when there's a vacancy work order, it's one work order. So they could be in there for a full week, which they are, they don't do it on one day.
So are these work orders on there?
I believe so, I'm not sure. This is for September, I'm not sure what, I don't know what she's talking about, because she didn't contact me like she's supposed to. This is day-to-day operations.
I don't contact you for a work order, I contact whoever does work orders.
You should contact me with a complaint, you should contact the office with a complaint.
I got a letter from Pam, got an email from Pamela, that gave me a date that they would be here, they never showed up.
I can talk to you about it after the meeting.
I have nothing to say to you.
Judy, that's very helpful.
Do you see that?
Do you see that? Do you see this?
We're really done, yeah.
I think that's, that was it, it's maintenance and work order, nonexistent and no hours in the office.
Okay, well, please document, work with the ED and see if you can get some satisfaction, okay?
Okay.
I assure you nobody's targeting you and abusing you and not keeping you safe in your apartment, okay? All right, so.
He wanted to speak.
Hi, yeah, please.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to know, how many times are they going to change a number to get ahold of somebody if I have a work order?
Yeah.
Because every month, every month when the newsletter comes out, in the last three months, there's been a different number on, in the, in the folder.
Can I, you hold on one, you hang on one second. Has the number been changing for maintenance?
It has not, it hasn't changed in about three years when we had Max D.
Where are we saying the number that we think has changed? Is this in the newsletter?
Right, it's in the newsletter that comes, comes out every month. You know, the housing newsletter, and then on one page, they have a list of all the different people and their phone numbers, what their titles are, what their phone number is. And then you look over to the right and it says, you know, they have a number for the emergency work orders. And then right below it, they have a number for the regular work orders. And when I call that, and I call the extension, I'm told that that person is not available at the time. Believe your, you know, your apartment number and your phone number and they'll get back to you, and they never do. Because a while back, a while back, I had, when somebody was in the office, I went to put in a work order. So then, oh, I called and they said they were going to send the paperwork, because there was a new form that you have to fill out for reasonable accommodation.
Accommodation, but that's not a work order, that's a reasonable.
Right, but it was reasonable accommodation. So then I had to wait three or four days before somebody delivered it to the office. And I got it from, from, what's her name?
Mary Billian?
Huh?
Mary Billian.
Mary, was it, who's the, anyway, she, she gave it to me and I filled it out. And I brought it back to the office the same day, because they, she came down, oh, Mary. And so then Mary says to me, well, okay, it's been approved, because I had put in a request to have panels put on either side of my air conditioner, because I have a medical letter on file, you know, here in the office, that I need to have the air conditioner available to me, you know, whenever I need it, you know, all year round. So then when I was talking to one of the maintenance guys, and he says, he said that, yeah, this week, they'll, you know, they'll take care of it, we'll see.
And they get taken care of?
Was that, is it done? No, because he said, he said it'd be this, this week. And then like you mentioned, Thursday, I guess is the only day that, normally that I've seen, you know, the maintenance people around here. You know, I've seen the white maintenance truck. So we'll see if that happens this week, this Thursday, on Thursday.
Okay. Maybe you need to remind them, I don't know how these things work, I don't want to get involved, but.
If it's scheduled, I will check in the newsletter to make sure that it's those same numbers that have been up for years.
Pamela, there's one other thing wrong here, is when you're checking on that, I need to have a work order put in, because my shower's not working right. But other than that, in the past, and I'll tell you, and I'll be honest with you, okay? When they put the new windows in, the maintenance people that were, you know, in, doing it, they come up to me and they had told me that my old air conditioner had black mold in it. And they got rid of it for me. I mean, they've been really great about that, when and if they were able to come down here to get it done. So then I got a new one, I had my health advocate, person get me a new air conditioner. And they came over, maintenance came over and put it in for me.
Great, you know, I heard the same thing from Judy, that the maintenance guys are good.
They're accepted, yeah, sure.
I mean, they're great when they're here, but when they're here.
I do want to remind the commissioners today.
And not here on Thursday.
I would like to remind the commissioners that the entire month of August and part of September, when we were doing the windows, maintenance and administrative staff were here every single day. That was.
Yeah, they were good.
It was, but that takes them away from other, other projects and other work orders.
That makes sense, you know, they got a big project, so other stuff fell through the cracks.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to add to what.
Okay, Judy, briefly, quickly, please.
What's your name, Bill? What's happened is, when you call, old employees are still on the answering service. Old employees, they're not even working here anymore. So when you call, you have to click number ten, number five, number two, not number ten.
Judy, write down and tell the administration, okay, we are not supposed to be involved with operations. The only time we're going to get involved with operations, if it really think, if it really looks to us like things are falling apart or the basics aren't getting done. And if the government wants to take me to court, I will go to court happily defending the commissioners' right to try to help their fellow community members. I live in Hadley, you're my neighbor, you're my community member, you vote, right?
Yeah.
So you and I, we both have a responsibility to look after each other, is how I feel. If somebody tells me I can't look after my neighbors, because you're now a housing commissioner, that doesn't work for me.
Doesn't work.
So there are open channels for you to get this stuff done, figure out the right, the right, is it Bill?
Yeah.
Bill, figure out the right phone number to call and some, ask your neighbor if you're not sure what's the right one.
Like I said, every, in the last three months, that the little book card comes out, there's been three different extensions that you need to call.
Well, keep calling until you get the right one and then make a note somewhere of the right one.
Well, no, I mean, there's an extension on there, you know, there's a regular number for, you know, non-emergency phone, you know, work orders. But then it goes through the whole thing, X field, and it goes, well, if you know the number, the extension number of the person you need to get, and then, that's what I'm saying. And then when you get it, that person that comes on the line is, well, there's no one here.
All right, I'm going to try to help you with this. I spoke to the chairman of the Amherst Housing Authority, who is our management agent, about having a live person answer the phone in Amherst. And what's that?
That can't happen, I'm sorry.
Pamela says it can't happen, so maybe it'll never happen. He seemed to think it was the right idea, he was.
That's what it used to be like, where someone would actually answer the phone here when somebody called, instead of going through Amherst and then.
when somebody called, instead of going through Amherst, and then having to go through so many different...
So I can just point out again that there's, we are understaffed, but we're fully staffed. We don't have staffing dollars to answer every phone call, because we...
Some phone calls, I mean.
Yeah, but not only do we get phone calls from tenants, we get phone calls from the 3,000, 10,000 applicants on the CHAMP system. Every single time you poll, you get, you get thousands and thousands of phone calls.
Anyway, there ought to be a solution, you think, cell phones, something, if somebody needs a live person.
Mr. Chairman, since we didn't finish that PHN 2023-05, can we put it first on the agenda for the 19th, because of the fact?
Sure.
That we didn't really finish it, and I just wanted to say one thing as a tenant before we leave, speaking as a tenant, what do you know?
I wouldn't do it, you should step away from the table, recuse yourself as a Commissioner, she's going to...
They told me I had to step away.
You have to, you're, you don't want to make an ethics violation, you're not supposed to, you're not supposed to advocate for yourself, so have her receiving the meeting.
Come over here, come over here. Be a tenant. Anyway, I just wanted to bring up the fact that I had a...
Wait, wait, we're being interrupted by...
As a tenant, I just wanted to have one second to say that I had a conversation with Pam the other day, and I wasn't going to say anything more about it, but it's been bothering me about the number of no trespassing that are going to tenants. We, I lived here for years, I never heard tenants getting no trespassing orders.
Is there something the Commissioners can do for you?
Well, you're aware of the fact that people, because you're, because of the fact that so many... You're supposed to be addressing the chair, not the camera.
Sue, you're talking to the camera, not the Commissioners, I don't know why.
Oh, I thought...
I don't believe we have a policy that covers no trespassing orders.
We've never had them handed out before, multiple tenants have them now, multiple tenants are being taken to court now, and because of the fact that it's such a large number at one time, all due to this one or two people that are living here, which I'm not mentioning names, because you can't do that, but I wanted to make, you know, the board aware that the number is an outrageous number of tenants.
Maybe you'd like to suggest, as a Commissioner, a policy that would help the Commissioners work with the administration on overseeing appropriateness of no trespass. Yeah, I don't want to talk about that right now.
Can I make the comment to that?
So it's troubling to me that a tenant will try to step up for a tenant that's breaking the law, instead of us trying to protect the tenant that is being abused by the other tenant. So that's what the job is of the housing authority, is to keep everything through the lease, everybody has the right to quiet enjoyment, and as I explained to Commissioner Oppenheimer on the phone, the no trespass orders were issued by the tenant and the tenant's family, because they have a right to that, and the housing authority as the owner has to issue the no trespass, no orders, order as well, and the Office of Elder Services is involved, too. So we have a Commissioner that's trying to protect people that are abusing other people.
These people have not been taken to court, so you have them guilty before they've gone in front of the judge.
No, it's only no trespass.
And the fact is, if the other, the tenants are not called in, and one side is always hurt here.
You don't know that, you don't know that.
All I'm saying is, but you're sitting there saying, I'm protecting people that have done wrong, you're not, we're not sure they've done wrong, that's just speculation, and that's what you choose to believe.
All right, and this conversation, I don't feel like it's appropriate for the Commissioners, I hope nobody's taking sides against innocent people on anything in life, so...
It's not that side. Mr. Chair?
It's not us to decide.
The other side's not voting. I make a motion, we adjourn.
The other side's not voting.
We're discussing the amendment.
Okay, a motion, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are...